All right, let's call this meeting on six thirty on Tuesday, October third. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of brief silent prayer.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, please be seated. The roll call, Ward one, Alderman Clark is here, I mean, gamble. I'm so shocked that Jeremy's back from China. Alderman Gamble's here, Ward two, Alderman Richardson's here, Ward three, Alderman LaFontaine's here, and welcome back, Alderman Clark is here. The city secretary, city clerk Lisa Blanchard, the mayor and city attorney, Ronnie Artigues. Item A, under mayor's comments, motion to amend and finalize the agenda with the addition of items four B, under mayor's comments, seven M and N, under board business, and eight E, two, under the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Ward one moves.
I'll second.
Ward two, seconds, any discussion? Let's vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four, motion carries four zero. I'd like to recognize the employee of the month this month, who works in our public, Streets Department in Public Works, Mr. Kermit LaFontaine, who almost single-handedly has dug out miles and miles and miles of ditches in preparation for hurricane season, so Kermit, come on up here. There's a couple of things I want to mention, under mayor's comments, and these things just came up in the past hour. So, as you know, we had the two tractors and about ten police vehicles on gov deals for a two-week auction period, that auction period ended today. All the police cars sold at various prices, I think it was a total of twenty-one thousand dollars. But the two tractors, the highest bid was seventy thousand on both. So, we paid a hundred and eight, we have a couple of options. One of the things I wanted to ask the Alderman tonight is to give me some kind of an idea on what is your reserve on this? I mean, do you want to try to, I think our reserve was a hundred thousand on this go around. How low are you willing to go? I mean, I have one city in Alabama that calls me three days a week. They're a town of seven to eight hundred people, not a lot of money, but they have to cut grass. I was told, and I don't know if the chief or fire chief remembers, that they had given us a fire truck after Katrina. It's called Garden City, Alabama. What do y'all think, numbers-wise, what would you like to see in return?
I don't know, I mean, I was hoping for more than seventy though.
Have we gone through MML to send a message out to all of the municipalities in the state?
That's would have to be a Catherine question, so I really don't know.
Yeah, because, I mean, if we notified all the municipalities in the state through MML, we may get some hits that way.
Do we still have to do an auction, since we've already auctioned it and that really didn't go to, we can actually outright sell them now?
Because you've already declared him surplus, you made the attempt to do it through auction. You didn't receive anything that met your reserve, so you can proceed to either amend your reserve and run them back to auction, or you can just dispose of them directly now, to the highest and best offer that you find acceptable.
And I know with the internet and everything, there's always for-sale sites and things, I mean, I'm at the point where, can we open it up to, I mean, even if it's nationwide, if somebody wants to come travel to get a tractor, if there's an internet site that we could put it on for sale, I mean, I don't know which one it would be on, but I think we need to get all the advertising we can on it.
We'd have to ask Catherine.
I mean, as far as a price, you know, I mean, granted they're used, they only got eight hours on them.
Eight hours on each, I mean.
But I don't, I don't expect to get the full hundred and eight that we paid. You know, I think we'd be hard pressed to probably get ninety-five.
Okay, we can rebid them at ninety-five, I had a conversation with Alderman LaFontaine earlier today. Of course, the guy who's telling me this works for gov deals, but he said he had a batch of laptop computers and I think there was ten of them, and it was four hundred dollars was the bid the first two weeks for all ten. And they declined it, they rebid it, and he got twenty-four hundred dollars. So, it just depends on who looks at it during that two-week period.
Who needs it.
And what I would like, if Beau could do it, I would like to find out today's price of what, if you bought those tractors again today, what, how much have they gone up? So, that's why, that way we'll know what we can reach out, because somebody's going to go buy a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar tractor and we can sell it for a hundred, save the forty thousand, because it's basically, yeah, it's eight hours, right? They consider it used, but they're brand new.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I'm just curious how much they cost today.
What about reaching out to the company that won the, that we purchased them from? To see if they have, see if they have anybody looking for any tractors and maybe they can help us out for all the equipment that we've bought from them over the years, maybe they can point us in the right, or point whoever needs one in the right direction.
Do y'all recall how long it took you to get them in after?
About eight months, nine months.
Yeah, it was about eight and nine months.
It was a pretty good while.
So, that's the selling point, immediate delivery.
That's what I'm saying, you know, I mean, he may have somebody coming in there looking for some or...
Okay, all right, we got some suggestions, we'll try all of them, if we, y'all opposed to rebid it at ninety-five?
No, if we bid, are we, is that, when would that next bid go out?
I'd have to ask Justin in the morning.
I mean, it's probably like, once a month, or once a quarter, or?
Well, they, they can do it at any time.
Oh, really?
Yeah, now that we've put that first batch of cars on, now say the police get a vehicle that they want to sell, we can just stick it on at any time, but it usually runs for a two-week bid period.
And that'd be going through the same source that they got a seventy thousand bid from? I don't know how, if they would find anybody else that would bid different.
That guy was, that guy was a dealer, you know, he was, he was buying them so he could resell them.
Exactly.
I would say, reach out to the place that we bought them from and see if they've got a waiting list first. And if they do, maybe, you know, ask them to send out your number and have them call you and see if it's somebody that has an immediate need for it, and then if not, then we'll go back and bid them out again.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll do that.
And he, he might be able to tell you what, you know, I mean, we're all sitting here saying ninety-five, he might give you a more realistic number, you know, I don't know.
Are they twenty-twenty-ones?
I think they are twenty-ones.
Yeah, but they only have eight hours on the engines, okay.
Yeah, maybe ask him, you know, what he thinks the value would be, and if he has anybody on the waiting list.
The only hours on the engine is the fire, firemen starting them up once a, once a month, to just keep the fluids moving through, okay. All right, next thing is, I want to have a special meeting about the Civic Center. I'm looking at some dates, at the end of October, I'm looking at the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, or twenty-fifth. Is anybody opposed to, and what's your choice on nights?
I cannot do the twenty-fourth, but I can do any other. I'm open on all three, so.
Bobby, you're on.
I need to get back to you, I need to see your calendar, see where I'm at.
Right here. The twenty-third, that's Monday night, I think twenty-third's a good night.
Okay.
Yeah, I think twenty-third's good for me also, I guess, Monday night all.
Yeah, we have the motion to set a special meeting for that purpose.
We need a motion to have a special meeting concerning the Civic Center on Monday, October twenty-third, at six P.M. Is that good?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
I'll second.
Ward three, seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, one, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item five, Alderman's comments, Ward one, Ms. Gamble.
Thank you. Kermit, wow, ten miles of main drains in just a few months, are you kidding me? That's amazing, that is amazing, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I have a couple of other questions. Beau, would you ask the grass cutter to do Mollaire and Beach Boulevard? Where that, you know, it kind of curves when you go up in there, it's like a jungle. It hadn't been cut, but maybe once, all year. Okay, I have a question for Josh. What is the status, please, on the Waveland Apartments?
I could answer that.
I hope I can.
Yeah, I probably know more about it than Josh does. We, I have a meeting scheduled, Ronnie doesn't really know yet, because it's either going to be Monday or Wednesday, that's what I'm waiting to hear back. There's a organization out of New Orleans, it's called NORF. And a gentleman named Brian Allen called me yesterday to schedule a meeting. They have, under contract, and they have sixty days of due diligence.
Is this a new one?
This is a new one, yes. The other guy was, the other guy had earned his money up, was waiting on funding, this group supposedly has cash. And so, it could close sooner than sixty days if they, they like what they see.
And what if they don't?
Then we'll go back to the guy who has to earn this money, I mean, I don't, I can't control that.
Well, no, what I'm saying, my, my question about...
If it's not, you're saying what happens if all the sales fall through?
Absolutely, because we've been through this four times already, we, it keeps getting put off months at a time because a new buyer comes along, and then we wait for another sixty, ninety days or whatever, and we hadn't moved forward at all, so can we still move forward?
Then move, then the recommendation would be to move forward with the formal condemnation of the, condemning and the forced demolition of the property.
I agree.
But you don't want, if you have a condemnation in process and there's a sale, it will kill the sale.
So, we want to wait until next meeting and we'll get a update and figure out?
Sixty, sixty days.
Well, he has sixty days, but you'll probably have a better feel for it after your meeting.
I know they were there yesterday, they were going back today.
Wait, Josh, I got one more.
And so, they, they driving over from New Orleans every day to look at them.
Awesome, that's wonderful, Keller Street.
Okay, I spoke to the owner, the owner's son is going to retrofit the building to be compliant, so he's going to make it shorter. Hasn't done it yet. I spoke to him shortly after the last meeting, and I said, you got thirty days.
Did we give that to him in writing? We need to give it to him in writing, because then we have no basis for when thirty days is up.
Well, I know when it's up, but you're right, we should give it right then.
Right, yeah, because if it's not in writing, it didn't happen, because we can't prove it. So, I would appreciate that, and so, the maximum height is fifteen feet. So, the second story's going to come off, is that basically what's going to happen?
Yeah, most of it, I think it's fifteen foot to the second, the top of the second story. It's fifteen foot from grade, I measured it myself, fourteen, actually fourteen and a half, so. It's not as tall as it looks, but that's what it is.
So, the inside, each floor is seven feet? That's weird. Well, well, it's supposed to be. Well, it's supposed to be. Okay, it, do you have an updated list on all the blighted properties that we've been working on over the months?
I can see that, we have one right now, yeah.
Awesome, and you send that to all of us?
I can, yeah.
That would be awesome, we'd appreciate it.
I spoke to Sabrina about doing that, like, on a monthly basis, so if she did it or not, I mean, I'll make sure it goes out tomorrow. But I know she has one on her desk now, updated, I made sure of that.
Okay, all right, and the last one is Meadow.
We walked through that house, I spoke to Ronnie about it, we're going out for bid to get it fixed up, you know, boarded up, grass cut, trash picked up, there was an interested buyer recently.
I've had several neighbors talk to me about purchasing it, but in order to do that, we have to know who owns it, and...
Oh, I have that information.
Well, I, every time I've asked about it, I was told that he, that the owner is deceased and that there's no, nobody knows who's in charge of anything. So, do you, do you have a person that we can actually speak to?
Yeah, the family lives on Grass Street in Hollywood. So, I mean, I've actually been there, I've issued a citation, and before they fixed the place up a year or two ago, and I'd like to go back again. When people were living there, it basically looked like this.
Well, yeah, after the police department raided it.
Yeah. So, we're actually going out, and if we can make it happen, I'd like to go out for bid now, like, tomorrow.
You're talking about advertising together? So...
We've already, it's already been declared a nuisance by you guys, like, since October nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
If we can move forward with it, I'm...
Is there an alternative to us boarding it up? I mean, if we know who owns it, can't we make them do that, instead of us doing it at our expense?
That's what you already tried to do, apparently.
Well...
And they didn't do it.
Well, is there, is there a penalty, a financial penalty? Is, I mean, citing, sending somebody a citation?
You assess the cost of the cleanup as a lien on the property, but if it's, property's not sold or no...
But there's no violation, financial assessment for violation?
Or you can, you can do up to half a times, you can add fees to it because of this process.
Yeah, but you still, you're, in order to collect it, I think what you're saying is, how do you really collect it?
Yeah.
You can assess it, but the only way to do it is to assess it as a lien, and if the property's sold or something, you'll get your money at that time from the sale.
To make them pay an instant fine, you have to bring them to court.
Well, yeah, but we have to give them a citation for that in order to set a court date, and, you know, it's like the PD giving somebody a speeding ticket. You gotta, you gotta hold their feet to the fire and cite them for it. And it's just happened a lot to us over the years, and I know that we've never collected a single dime because in previous years, even after we tore buildings down, they didn't file the liens with, with the court. So, you know, we, I just, you know, get tired of Waveland being taken advantage of. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I agree.
Thanks, Josh. That's that, Ron.
I have one more thing to ask you, Mayor, if you don't mind, would you please look into seeing what it would cost to fix the street near the manhole, east of Henderson Street, west of Arnold Street? It's about halfway between the two, there is a terrible, terrible dip right there. You're, it's already scheduled to be done?
Yes, you see it's painted already.
Oh, I never noticed it was painted. Perfect, you're a good man, Beau, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gamble.
Appreciate it.
Ward two, Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, I just got a couple of things, Beau, I said anything, everything, but I'm sure this is an after-Cruising the Coast thing too, into Gulf and St. Joseph, the water leak, I'm sure, there's a patch before, I'm sure you're going to be digging it up again.
Yes.
All right, and the only other thing, I'd just like to thank the mayor, our attorney, Lisa, and the board for supporting this Cruising the Coast event, it's really, it's really going to, it's blowing up, it's going to be probably bigger than anything that Coleman Avenue's ever seen. And really like to shout out to all the street crew, Beau's guys, Kermit has done a lot of work to support this. So, everybody behind the scenes and on the lines, I appreciate every, every bit of you, thank you.
Well, thank you, Bobby, and your wife, Melissa, you have done a lot of hard work, and it's all going to pay off tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Then you start getting ready for next year.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Bob, Alderman, LaFontaine, Ward three.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a couple of them. One, not sure, I received a call about the cemetery when the grass was last cut, can we check on that?
Well, the variety will be cut this week, try to make sure you got everything ready for cruising.
Okay, the park repair, any update on those?
The playground equipment? Yes, we have a letter, we have a quote, we have the money and a budget. We can't find anybody else to give us a quote, so we have to get a sole-source letter to, so that we can move forward with the only quote that we have. We have tried and tried and tried to get people to give us quotes, we met the company at the MML, they said they wanted to bid on it, but give us a quote, and they won't return our calls, so...
Do I need to get with Catherine when she gets back?
Yeah, city attorney will get with Catherine, and we'll be ready to move forward on that.
The other thing I have is the contract for grass, I know we're going to get one, try to get it advertised, but we can try to get something awarded around December.
I was shooting for the first week in November for it to hit, with bids coming in for December for an effective date of January was the schedule.
I know there's going to be some language change in it and stuff like that, whenever you get that drafted, can we?
You would like to, yeah, you guys, some of you had given me some of the things you wanted to see in it already, but what I'll do is, I'll send that out again for you to give it a final.
And the one that we're in right now, currently, we extended that until?
January.
Was it January?
Yeah, through the end of December.
End of December.
And then, one other thing as well, Rhonda, I'm not going to speak for everybody on the prior boards, but we was under the impression that the liens was being put on properties.
Oh, I know, I know you are, you are, I know.
Because, I mean, we've put a, I mean, we was averaging, you know, two, three thousand dollars for demolition of houses and stuff. We really thought that was being put on, and speaking of that, what about the park playground? I know that there was an insurance issue, there was no way to have any?
No.
It's a hundred thousand dollar deductible, our policy.
For our policy, what about the first two policies?
He does not have any, no insurance, no insurance. He still hasn't gone to court, I have it on my calendar, it keeps getting continued. I've talked to a judge about some type of restitution, I don't know what that can be. But I'm going to, you know, do my best to see what we can get from him.
And then, one last thing, is the, there was a, the discussion last meeting was about the baby box, do we have any update on that? As far as, have we heard anything from the company, are they willing to?
I was supposed to take care of that, I haven't had time to do it, but I'll have it for the next meeting.
Is the, is the cost going to be the three hundred dollars that was mentioned, or is it going to be the eleven thousand dollars that's in the contract?
No, 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 well, they're going to raise, they're going to raise the money, and I've talked to, and Ronnie has talked to the, to the company as well. We can raise the money first and then go through with it where the money's already in hand, and then we can do the contract where it would only be three hundred dollars, because the rest of the funds would already be there.
And then, one other thing too, it was explained that we wouldn't have to do anything to the box, but in the contract, it says that we provide the maintenance on the box, and if anything's wrong with the box...
I'm not, did, did they address that with you when you talked to them?
They're supposed to send me a revised contract with different language, but they have not done, they have not done that.
Okay, I'll make sure we get that.
That was all I had, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thanks, Shane, Alderman Clark.
Yes, just one thing really, the lights on Highway ninety, the past two mornings have been out.
Can you, if you see lights, I'll call.
Talking about all of them.
All of them, huh?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I was supposed to say, I was approached at Walmart today from an employee, so she gets there at five o'clock, and wants it all the lights on Highway ninety, most of those areas off.
Yeah, it was between Waveland Avenue and six oh three for sure, when I went to, it's about five o'clock the past two mornings.
Okay.
I saw MDOT out there, working on them about a week ago.
Yeah, I called Mississippi Power because the ones between the fire station... Yeah, I called Mississippi Power because the ones between the fire station and the main. Drive into Walmart, well, out a couple of weeks ago, and they had a couple out down by Smiley's, and I, I just called Mississippi Power when they go out there, but. If people don't tell me, I don't go to highway much after dark, so.
Could I ask a question on that?
Mm-hmm.
I know we had in-house doing all, doing that for a while, not in-house, but we had hired someone to start doing that, which is no longer with us, and Aaron had done it for a while, are we looking at? Another electrical contractor that can do our street lighting?
No, we signed a lease with um, Mississippi Power.
Okay.
Yeah, when we converted from bulbs to LEDs, to LEDs, and Baystate Lewis has the same lease.
Right, so.
That reminds me, where, um, the flash and light at Nicholson in OST. What about that?
We have, we found an electrician um, that can do it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're just waiting on his timetable, so we're trying to push him. Somebody who has a bucket truck, who has uh, given us a price to do those lights in the past, so we just gotta. Wait for his schedule to allow him to do it.
Perfect.
He's a one-man shop, basically. Okay. All right, Jeremy, anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you. There's no public comments, so we're gonna move on to board business, item A, motion to approve the depository docket of unpaid claims dated October second, twenty twenty-three. For expenses initiated through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. In a depository docket of claims paid and unpaid dated October third, twenty twenty-three, for fiscal year twenty-four related expenses. In the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll move.
I'll second. Who moved? Jeremy.
Jeremy, Ward four moves, Ward one seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item B, motion to approve the operating utilities docket of unpaid claims dated October second, twenty twenty-three, for expenses initiated through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in amount of forty-five thousand, ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. In the operating utility docket of claims paid and unpaid dated October third, twenty twenty-three, for fiscal year twenty-four related expenses in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and eleven cents.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
I'll second.
Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead.
I got one question, Mayor.
Okay.
And, and after we vote this one, it's back on A, but we can go ahead and vote this one, and I'll go back to A if you don't mind.
Okay. All right, uh, let's go ahead and vote B, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
I guess my biggest, my, my question on it, Mayor, was the October third, is that mostly payroll, did we have a payroll fallout on that first?
No, no, what it is, is that we had to split, we're trying to split the cutoff of the prior year from the upcoming year.
Right.
But we had to date them both in October, so we did one on the third, I think second and third, or third and fourth, you'll see on the date of. But the first one is related to prior year expenses, so that we can go back and charge those to prior year. Those are invoices that we've received that are all related to prior year, and we're allowed to go up to October thirty-first to charge to prior year. Which is better for our this, for our budget this year.
But on the October third one, date ten three, twenty twenty-three, is that the, is that the right one that I'm looking at?
There's two different dates, it's the earlier date is.
Looks to me like that total is.
There's four different dockets.
Right. And the one has mostly like payroll.
That's possible, yes. There we go.
Which one, Shane?
Well, we've got a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-six, eight ninety-nine.
That's right here, October second.
And, and then you've got October the third, for two ninety, one fifty-one.
All right, here's the general fund. Page six. Page seven, all right, here's the first one, one twenty-six, eight ninety-nine. That's for October second. And then we have, um, that's, this is the second one. Seven eight two. Is. One twenty-four, two fifty-four.
Yeah, but this is, this is two ninety, one fifty-one.
There it is, two ninety, one fifty-one. Okay. That's the total of the second one, that is the October third docket, for the general fund. Okay, then you should roll into the utility fund, and it's gonna be the, the last, you'll see, the pages are numbered, so when you get to the last page. Of each section, that'll give you your total. All right, there's seven eight two, keep coming. Seven eight two is about.
One sixty-five.
Three K, yes. It's, keep going. It should be two ninety, one fifty-one. There you go. And there's your total of your second docket with the breakdown of the funds and what was charged to each fund.
All right, we, we good?
We're good.
All right. Item C, under board business, motion to approve and award lowest and best bid in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to Land Shaper. For milling one point five inch existing asphalt and repaving numerous patch areas along Waverlin Kill Cut Off Road. We did get three bids, and Land Shaper was the, the cheapest.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
I'll second.
Ward two seconds, any discussion?
I just have a question, is, is, um, how is that gonna affect the work that's gonna be done? On Waverlin Kill Cut Off?
It's, this is gonna be temporary work, I mean, we're still waiting to hear back on the grant we submitted um, to do the road, so.
Okay.
Um, we can't wait any longer, it's getting worse by the day, and people are complaining, so.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Okay. Um. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, you had motion and a second.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item D, motion to approve and implement employee pay raises as budgeted in approved fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Ward three moves, Ward two seconds, any discussion?
Only question I have, Mayor, is uh, are we gonna get a list showing what everything, what, cause before, we would always get the prior year, and then what was approved, and showing the additional?
I'm working on a spreadsheet right now, I've got about four, the department's done, I'll keep adding, so you can see each one, each employee.
Okay.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item E, motion to approve the following broker of record letters with Cadence Insurance. Y'all don't need me to read all of these.
No.
I'll move.
Ward four moves.
I'll second.
Ward one seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item F, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature on work order twenty-two dash zero zero two dash zero fifteen. With Kneecity Engineering and Surveying in amount of ninety-five hundred dollars for engineering services related to Highway nine, a sewer improvement project.
I'll move.
Ward two moves?
I'll second.
Ward four seconds, any discussion? This is something I asked Jason to do with uh, the high probability of a major business coming into that area, where there's no sewer now, so. Okay, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item G, motion to approve and adopt the Hancock County Tax Assessors Municipal Assessment Schedule for the City of Waverlin.
Move.
Ward one moves? Ward three seconds?
Yes.
Any discussion? Let's vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item H, motion to approve and spread out the minutes, the Gas Quest Boardwalk Pipelines LP Use Agreement. To facilitate, facilitate access to and provide information concerning gas transportation and storage services. On their gas pipe bomb systems, as well as provide certain interactive fun, functions related to the transportation and storage services. A boardwalk, city clerk Plantch, Lisa Plantch, who was authorized by city attorney to sign the contract in mayor's absence. Who was out of town on city business at the time, deadline was nine eight twenty-three.
I'll move.
Ward two moves?
I'll second.
Ward three seconds?
Just so you know, discussion wise, this was a continuation of the existing contract, it fell in between your meetings, and in order to keep gas flowing in the city, it had to be done by that date.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item I, motion to approve real estate. Hell, permissible use agreement between Douglas C. Bujor and Diane in the City of Waverlin for use of their property at two oh eight Coleman Avenue for pot rods and hospitality.
And you, you can actually do I.
I, J, K, and N.
All in one motion, cause it's the same subject.
Just different property, different owners. Motion?
I'll move, Alderman.
I'll second.
Ward two moves, Ward four seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. We're down to item L, motion to approve the municipal compliance questionnaire for the period ten one twenty-two to nine thirty twenty-three.
Move.
Ward one moves?
I'll second.
Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item M, motion to advertise for RFQ for engineering services related to. MWCI Mississippi Water Infrastructure Grant Program, this is associated with AWPer funding.
I'll move.
Ward four moves?
Second.
Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. There's no planning and zoning tonight, the consent agenda, before you guys vote, I just wanna remind you all about item C. The appointment to someone to the uh, Hancock County Tourism Board, I don't know if y'all have a name tonight, but the last person's term expired the end of September, so. We have an appointment by the mayor to ultimately get to appoint another person to the tourism board. So, cause consent agenda, motion to approve the following consent agenda items as numbered A through L.
I'd like to uh. Pull D. Just to update.
Okay.
Remove it?
No, just.
Just remove it from this.
Just with discussing.
Yes, yes.
Any discussion? We didn't have any motions, have we?
A motion?
Ward two moves?
I'll second.
Ward one seconds, any discussion?
The um, until we have.
If you don't have someone for C, C should be removed to, instead of just approving it with a mic.
Can I ask a question about C?
I'm sorry?
Can we get some information on what exactly this, this position requires of someone, and, you know?
The only thing I know is they meet the third Thursday of the month at the Train Depot at Nana.
It's kinda hard to ask somebody if they wanna do it if you don't really know what it is that they're gonna be doing.
And I actually had dinner with some of the tourism people last night, and they surface a name, but they wanna. Uh, make sure that she would be suitable and fit in, and then I will bring it to y'all if that's okay.
All right, let's make sure we get somebody by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Should we remove C and D?
We need to remove, we have a motion to accept items A through L, removing items C and D.
Well, we can just discuss D, can't we?
Yes.
We don't have to remove it.
We just discuss.
So, let's just remove C.
All right, remove, remove an item C.
I'll move, I will, no, you have to.
We already have motions, yeah. Okay, discussion, discussion on D.
On D, the only thing I want to do, I know, I asked Lisa and the mayor to put it on the agenda for nine o'clock closure tonight, and as the mayor knows, it's just kinda. Snowballed and, and. Prior to the meeting, I asked the mayor, few Aldermen, if we can close it down, and I got with the chief, we went ahead and closed the barricades and. Everybody could see what's going on outside, and we don't want any traffic coming down, and that's the only thing I wanted to change on it.
So, we wanna say affect about six thirty instead of nine?
Yes.
The um, are you gonna go ahead and close all the way at the ends of the roads too, Mike, cause if not, you probably gonna have a lot of.
You have a long jam.
And, and what we plan to do?
And you're not gonna be able to get them out.
Just Coleman, just Coleman Avenue tonight, not the, by terrace, we're going blocking Coleman Avenue so everybody can make sure they're, everything's set up.
Okay.
From Antioch?
Yeah.
All right, let's go ahead and vote, every item except C. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes four zero. There's no need, uh.
I don't have anything.
Hmm?
I don't have.
No need for executive session tonight, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Before you, before you motion that, Mayor, I'm still hung up on this uh, on this docket, I'd like to discuss just a little more. So, what I'm looking at is, today's the third. The second part of this docket, correct me if I'm wrong, the second part of the docket is for fiscal year twenty-four?
Yes. It's gonna be for bills ten one through today, or, or things that we, the invoices we received in September that will be related to October expenses.
So, but, on here though, the way, the way that I'm reading it, in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six and a depository docket of claims paid and unpaid dated October third. For fiscal year twenty-four. So, in two days, we've spent two hundred and ninety thousand?
Well, yes.
Wait, invoices, that would do?
They're split, it's two ninety plus the one twenty-six, eight. That, it's the regular docket, which is the total of the two of them, we just split them to prior year and current, and the new year.
Right, so the new year is only October first, second, and today, which is the third.
But that's not saying that we only got, it's not just three days worth of invoices, it's invoices we received in the prior year. But they're gonna be budgeted for in this new year, they're attributable to the new fiscal year.
Is it stuff that we pay in advance?
No, it's things that we've already, but we planned to pay it, they bought it, planning to pay it after ten one, and it would be attributable to the new fiscal year.
But if we've received whatever the product is in fiscal year twenty-three, it would be charged to twenty-three, regardless of the invoice date.
Not necessarily. Do you know why Catherine did it the way she did? All I know is that she was splitting them, I wish I had Bruce here tonight.
I guess what I'm saying is, if it's something that we've received, a service that we've received in twenty-three, regardless of the invoice date, that should be billed in twenty-three, and then. And then any service that you receive, or if it's something that you pay in advance for twenty-four, you should be charging twenty-four.
If you had invoice in, in September, that is for service in October.
Correct.
So, we're paying the October service. Catherine's on vacation, so.
So.
I guess, Trump, uh, to piggybacking on Shane, is that, those invoices, was that something that was budgeted in the twenty-three year?
Yes.
And we're gonna pay it up to twenty-four year?
Twenty-three, we're backing it up to twenty-three.
Right.
Twenty-four, we had planned to pay it in twenty-four, budgeted in twenty-four.
But like the invoice dates on a lot of, what I'm looking at for uh, engineering and things like that, are invoiced. In twenty-three, um, budget, September. Twelve, twenty-seven.
I don't have any answers for that.[1720.22]
That's the, that's the date of the invoice?
That's what it says, invoice date is.
All of these is September.
Nine twenty-seven, nine twelve, and if it's a service that we've received in fiscal year twenty-three, it should be budgeted in twenty-three. Nine and twenty-four.
Nine, one, nine twenty for eighteen.
Leave it approved, so we don't have anything fall for the cracks, it needs to be paid, but we'll get them an explanation by tomorrow.
Can we do that? Can we leave it approved, and we'll get you an explanation by tomorrow?
But don't release anything until you get the explanation to the board.
I mean, I think it's, it's stuff that we need to pay, there's no question about that, but the question is, should it be charged in twenty-three budget or in twenty-four budget? I mean, 'cause it just seems like an awful lot, two hundred and ninety thousand in three days. Our typical dockets don't run but four hundred a month.
Mm-hmm.
We're only three days in, so.
I'll have to actually pull invoices and see. She's got them separated in her folder.
Yeah, and it, like I said, I mean, it's just some of the things like the rental of the bucket rents, repairs and maintenance, premier Ford, repairs and maintenance, I mean, that's all things that we've already taken care of and got, it's not things that we're.
Mm-hmm.
And, and those were invoices from in September.
I'll have to ask Bruce, I know he worked with her on it.
Okay.
All right, we'll get you those answers tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Ward two moves.
I'll move, I mean, I'll second.
Ward four second. Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four. Motion carries, we're adjourned.
Yeah, you still, jet lagged.